I'd like to welcome everybody here for a meeting of the City Council. First of all, Bailey, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Backus.
Here.
Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Egner.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
So I'd ask everybody to stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first order of business would be to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda, yes.
A second. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? And then we'll move on to the open forum. Bailey, do you have a sign up sheet? And forgive me if I murder your name, but Karen Freed.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Karen Freed, 529th Avenue Southwest. I'm a little embarrassed to say that I live in Forest Lake because of all of the bullying that is going on on social media against our mayor. What a terrible example this is for our children and grandchildren. To see, we are adults and know better. Yes, Ben said something that he shouldn't have said, and I don't condone it, but he has since apologized. Who hasn't said something you were not proud of? I know I have, but you apologize, go on, and you don't bully the person on social media. If you have any kind of morals, let's be adults. Social media is even going so far as to boycott his business. This business has been in Forest Lake for much longer than I have, and I've been here 52 years. He pays his fair share of taxes and complies with all safety concerns. No hazards go to, no hazard waste is going into Clear Lake. Most of you, when you moved here, knew Winnick was here. If you didn't like it, why did you move here? Councilmember Husnick, how would you like it if social media were telling people to stop shopping at your hardware? Not a good thing. Bullying is not acceptable, no matter what age. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Kathy Bystrom.
Good evening, councilmembers. Kathy Bystrom, 21565 Harrow Avenue North. I'm disappointed that Mayor Winnick isn't here tonight because the bulk of my comments are directed his way. While doing some research on ethical leadership in the context of city councils, I stumbled on the Minnesota Mayor's Handbook produced by the League of Minnesota Cities. It's a wonderful publication, rich in information on everything from legal requirements to building effective teams, to meeting management, citizen involvement, ethical leadership, and more. Basically, a handbook on how to be a successful mayor. As I was perusing the document, I was simultaneously reflecting on the recent activities of our council. The appointment of Councilmember Freer's replacement to maintain 3-2 control, the subsequent rejection of the zoning text amendment, which eliminated our chance of bringing a mental health facility and 150 jobs to the community, and the most recent conduct at a workshop, which has not only once again shed a negative light on our beloved community at the local and state level, but now at the national level as well. I was particularly drawn to Chapter Four on mayoral leadership in this publication, and I'd like to share a few excerpts. In the interest of time, I'll paraphrase. Mayors can inspire citizen participation in government by modeling respect and civility. A mayor is in a unique position as a presiding officer to model decorum, civility, and respect, and should conduct meetings in a manner that encourages open discussion of issues and hones differences of opinions without the use of personal attacks, name-calling, or scapegoating. Ethical mayors are driven by fairness. They recognize that many city decisions will have adverse as well as positive outcomes, and they therefore strive to make the best decision as defined by its ultimate fairness to all concerned. This often means making impartial decisions on the merits of issues alone while disregarding personal allegiances. Ethical mayors recognize the importance of conscientious and ethical government as a value in itself. They do not use their office or authority for revenge, prestige, or personal gain. They recognize that government is a human institution, and that the motivations of those in government will determine if the government itself is effective or ineffective, good or bad, ethical or unethical. They care enough to make a positive difference and then act accordingly. Finally, I'd like to draw your attention to Appendix F of this document entitled "Sample Statement of Values." In sum, a comprehensive overview of core principles for ethical conduct. It is quite well done. Council may want to consider using it as a guide in the development of a code of conduct if there isn't one already, because it appears we cannot have a reasonable governing body without it. If there is a code of conduct, I suggest it be reviewed, as I believe our mayor may be in violation. Mayor Winnick has a responsibility to represent our city in a way that places it and its citizens in the best possible light. I am personally weary of having to answer to this conduct and that of some councilmembers wherever I go. We are currently a model of dysfunction. As I've asked Mayor Winnick before, what do you want your legacy to be? It's time to lead with integrity.
Jim Redfield.
Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the City Council, good evening. I am Jim Redfield, and I live at 6684 Lipizan Trail in my fair city, Forest Lake. I quote, "It was the best of times; it was the worst of times. It was the age of wisdom; it was the age of foolishness. It was the epoch of belief; it was the epoch of increduity. It was the season of light; it was the season of darkness. It was the spring of hope; it was the winter of despair." We had everything before us. I'm sure you recognize this piece from Charles Dickens, "A Tale of Two Cities." I was reminded of this quote when I was reading the front page of the Star Tribune for May 23, 2018. The article told us about a tale of two cities in Minnesota. Headline: Town Offers Troubled Kids a Welcome Embrace. Headline: Youth Psychiatric Facility Rebound from Ejection. The mayor, Stephen Voss, of East Bethel, told his residents at a community meeting, "We are embracing this project." Referring to Forest Lake, Dave Hatford of the Hills said, "It was night and day when it comes to the mayor and the city councils." So, the East Bethel mayor and city council showed leadership, they showed vision, they presented a plan to the community, they took action. Right now, they are in the process of making changes in the zoning codes and land use. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Acting Mayor, members of the council, we have seven months left in 2018. I ask you, will you show us leadership? Will you present us with a vision? Can you work together for our community? As Forest Lake members and residents, we want to see our elected officials act like adults. We want leadership. Thank you.
I'm going to murder this name. Carrie Maroszek. Was I close?
Close enough. My maiden name's worse, so don't worry about it. I'm used to getting it murdered. So, hello, council. My name is Carrie Maroszek. I live at 520 12th Avenue Southeast here in Forest Lake. Approximately a year ago, I stood before you and quoted off what was right in front of me, as good as it sounds. It doesn't sound real great anymore. I work in Wyoming at the hospital, and I have people that come from all different communities to us. Many of my coworkers know that I live here. After what happened last week, I walked into work, and the first thing my charge nurse said to me is, "What just happened?" It hit everything very quickly. Tempers, I'm sure, were heated. It was a horrible situation. But in the same respect, as an adult, we all must take responsibilities for our actions. If I walked into my job and made a comment like that to a coworker, as a mayor and planning commissioner would be coworkers, there would be repercussions, possibly suspensions, possibly even termination. In the same respect, a mayor talking to a citizen is the same as me talking to a patient. Had I said something like that to a patient, I would have been immediately terminated from my job. There is repercussions for every action, and unfortunately, if things aren't going to change, all it's going to do is paint our city as a horrible place to be. I grew up here. I don't want to leave here. My kids go to school here and have an amazing life. But in the same respect, I don't want them to grow up learning that this is how government works, because it shouldn't. You, as a council, with Mayor Winnick not being here, need to take into account that every action that happens reflects on every single one of you. A month ago, not even, just over a month ago, we got amazing press for the fire department opening up for the blizzard prom, and it was all over the news. I have family and friends all over the world who saw it and were proud. And a month later, that gets ruined with us all over the news again, with the news making the same comment that I have, that it's not as good as it sounds. You, as a council, need to look deep and figure out if this is really what you want your legacy to be, because one person can affect the legacy of all. Thanks.
Ron Schaefer.
Ron Schaefer, Forest Lake. I want to apologize to everybody, because I missed the last meeting. It sounded exciting. I wish I'd have been here, because with controversy comes change, and for the people that live out in the old township, we could use some change. We're paying way more taxes than we used to. We're getting absolutely no benefits, and nobody seems to care at all. It just goes on and on and on. And if the mayor and another man had a dispute, fine with me, maybe something good will come of it. And another thing, when are we going to get equal treatment here? Why are we paying for all these things in the city when we don't get any benefit of it in the township? Arc lights and parks and trail, we don't get any of that. We live on acreage out there, not your 30, 40, 50-foot lots like you city slickers live in, and you've got to have a park and a walking path or something. We don't have to have that. And a lady once said that a former mayor, his exciting time was when he united the township and the city. Well, that was my worst day. We never got to vote on it, and he'd talk about America being free. Where's the freedom there? I wanted to live in the township. If I wanted to live in the city, I could have stayed in St. Paul. I wanted to get into a small town, and I moved into the township. And you see what the mayor did to me, and his henchmen too, you know? And then when they pointed this guy here, the mayor, he probably feels politically more like the mayor. Well, when the other mayor was in there, this Molly Bonnet was a rubber stamp for him, so now people are complaining. I tell you what, if you really want to get something done, make me a dictator or king, and I'll settle your hash. That's all I got to say now. Thank you.
Chris Martin.
Good evening, council. And you keep your mouth shut while I'm talking this time.
Really?
All right. I was really hoping Mr. Winnick is going to be here tonight. He's not, but I'm going to read my letter anyway, hoping that he is maybe watching this at home. "Mr. Winnick, where do I begin to tell you how disappointed, appalled, and shocked I am at your behavior as the mayor last council meeting? I have really seen in the last two years how the title 'mayor' has gone to your head. It's kind of like if Ben wants to do it, Ben will do it, because he can do it, with no regards of what it's doing to the city or the community of Forest Lake. This community voted for a mayor, not a dictator. Forest Lake slogans is as good as it sounds. Let me tell you, Mr. Winnick, Forest Lake was not sounding very good on the news, in the papers, again, and you were right in the center of it all. The people in this community deserve a role model that they can be proud of and respect, and you have shown again you are not that person. Ben Winnick, it's time for you to step down. I want a mayor who is respectful and puts his community's best interests first, not his own agenda. You have proven to me again you are not that person. Please do this community a favor and resign as mayor. Thank you."
Jennifer Curtis.
Good evening, Acting Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Jennifer Curtis. My address is 16839 Basser Street in Columbus. I'm here tonight to request the resignation of Mayor Ben Winnick, which is extremely unfortunate that he isn't here this evening. There is no room for a bully in government leadership, in any leadership, government role. A leader should be one of poise. A leader should be able to listen, and not just listen to formulate a response, but listen to listen. A leader should put aside their personal agenda and those that are close to them and put the city first. There are currently over 1,100 signatures on a petition online requesting the mayor's resignation. It's time that the leadership start listening to its community members. If anything can come out of this, good can come out of this, I can assure you that there is a whole new group of people fired up and ready to take action in November.
Dick Cheetah.
Dick Cheetah, 21833 Healy. I want to share with you tonight my view of what's going on. As a 60-plus-year resident, I think that I know a little bit about the history of Forest Lake. I served 20 years on both the Township Board and the City Council. I feel that there's a problem here, and the problem should be looked at and held accountable for their actions. First of all, the mayor and the planning commission member who had differences, issues, guess what? Shouldn't have been brought here. Do you always dump your dirty garbage out in the public? I don't think so in your personal life, then why do it here? I think that those personal differences should have been handled outside of the council. I think that you look at the conversations that's taken place. You've had mayors in the past, one mayor who did not allow an open forum. We had one mayor who gavelled down people when they got off the track on a different And then we had one mayor who supported open forum on agenda items only. Made sense. We have a new mayor now, and he's been gracious enough to open the door for all the comments and until this last issue, received them, and I think as commissioners, you've all done that. I know as a member, sitting on the council and on the town board, I was given some direction by our attorney. Attorney said that I had two options. One option was to gavel down anyone who was off-track and not bringing information that was beneficial to the council at the time. The other one was bite your lip and listen him out. Thank him for the information that he brought forward, and move on. I don't condone the remark that the mayor made. I think it was off, was off-color, and I give him credit for publicly apologizing for that. On the other hand, I look at the planning commissioner who came forward with a written prepared statement attacking the mayor over issues they disagreed on. Both of them knew better than bringing it out here in this forum. It shouldn't ever be discussed that way. I think that the actions have, as a previous speaker said, brought a real negative light and air on this community. I don't think the community deserves that type of action and view, but at the same time, I don't condone people mixing the pot, keeping issues stirred, going to the local media, going to the national or statewide public media. It's no benefit. There's no benefit. All you're doing is bringing forth garbage that doesn't reflect good on this community. I think gentlemen earlier said we have to start looking at what's best for this community, its reputation, regardless who's sitting in those seats. I look at this, this is the second occurrence that I've seen where a group of people became very loud and overpowering, both on the media. I know, I look at Facebook, I look at other media, I'm amazed. Some of the comments are made, these people are masters of the four-letter words. I don't think that their friends, family, or employer would appreciate the comments they make. I think that having an issue come forward after the issue that we had not long ago on the police issue. Now, if any of you looked at it, and I hope you did, the city audit, because what you'll find is a difference, a major difference in dollars that were reported at the time the county and the city were looking at police protection. I don't condone misrepresentation or any of the issues that were misconstrued, misappropriated. It doesn't work. And in my view, after reviewing the audit and reviewing both the contracts of the city and Washington County, this community lost the benefit of $5 million over the five-year contract, plus any other benefits that were provided by the county. How many times are we going to have a group of people, the squeaky wheel, stand up, make accusations, and sit down? We see it on the national all the time. I just don't think I want it in Forest Lake. I think that, excuse me, I think that the comments made by peoples who are not knowledgeable and don't have the information readily available on his business or any other business, when they don't have a copy, have not read a CUP, don't know the history of his business, and condemn them, that's not fair, and it's not right.
Can I get you to wrap it up, Dick?
I think that we've got to stop stirring the pot and start solving the perceived problems with the remedies that are available, and you all know what those remedies are. We can go forward all together.
Thank you. Eugene Hurstel.
Thank you, council. Eugene Hurstel, 10234, 204th Street, North Forest Lake. I'd like to start out with some positive things. I think I appreciate yesterday's memorial service that was at Lakeside Park. It is to honor the people who've passed before us that carried the torch and stood in the gap for us, and I really appreciate that. I think, Sam, you've served. Ed, you've served. I'm not sure if your husband served, or, and I'm sure there's others here that have served and put their life on the line for our country and for us, and I appreciate I guess what I'd like to say is, I'm going to try to be as objective as possible. I don't mean to degrade anyone. I don't mean to be critical of them personally, but I would say that perception is everything in what we're dealing with a lot of times, and that we create a crisis. I thought that at times this council has worked together, and most of the votes, and when I go to the meetings or watch them on TV, that I see people working together at times, and then there's other times, then we get into a real emotional battle, and I know it's know it's hard for some people, and I had a, I'm sure I'd have a time with it if it affected me to a certain point, too. But sometime we have to be objective, not create a crisis necessarily, but look at it and say, why in the world exactly are we coming up against this, and what are the good points, what are the bad points? I look at the health issue as I, the building that was being built, and did a little bit of research on it, because I think it's good to do your own research. I don't get a memo to show up to the city council meeting and then, here, say this. Or say what you, you know, feel and work, and maybe go through some of the research and check it out and try to look at it objectively. I think that probably other cities are saying, or have been asking, that I talk to, or that have been talked to, say, why did they reject it? Why did they come up and say that, when they went before them, as it was brought up even in one of the meetings, that other communities had rejected it, and what was the reason? How did it get past the planner? Maybe it would have been a good idea for the planner to get a consensus and talk to everybody first and see how they felt. And I know at first, everybody was a little bit leery of it, and because of the change in the amendment and so forth. But then we see a good point, let's create a crisis. We know that Mayor Ben is against it, and he brought that out from the very beginning. So let's see if we can make him look bad, and then really get everybody riled up, especially when they don't know, they don't know the whole story. So we need to maybe look deeper into this and see just what we're affecting, whether it's properties or whatever. That's what I would hope, that it wouldn't necessarily become an emotional issue, which of course now, mental health is kind of, hey, what's going on in our country? We're having some problems, we're having. Well, I think some of the problems, and most of the problems, are because of the ungodliness. And it's catching up with us. And it says in the Bible that, you know, God in the end is going to let us be who we want to be and see what happens. And in this country, and as I see, and I look and see the criticism, and I see the stuff on Facebook and stuff, I don't know. And I may ask you, Mara, I'd like to know from you about the lobotomy statement. I don't, you know, and I don't mean to be critical, but I see that something like that or is called, and I, last time you said that it was on your personal page and stuff.
It was.
And, pardon me?
It was.
Yeah. And that's not going to, you know, we all make mistakes, we all say stupid things. Hey, listen, we've gone and we've talked to people, and we've said different things. It didn't get out, and I, Mayor Ben should have never said that. Absolutely. I'm pleased that he did apologize for it, and that he's reaching out to Mr. Langness, and I hope that they can get that straightened out. I really do. I would hope that as this, as I look at the council and I see some good things working together and that, that that's maybe what we can do. Maybe it would be a good idea to get off Facebook, or at least, you know, say, hey, maybe I shouldn't speak out. I mean, today we have Roseanne, she speaks out on Twitter, which was wrong.
Can we wrap it up?
It's okay. That's all right. Listen good, be objective. So with that said, I would hope that the council and the people could work together and not create a crisis, because I think the crisis created is one of perception and is really done for this fall. Thank you.
Is there anybody that did not get an opportunity to sign up and would like to speak?
My name is Elvin Norby. I live at 10255217th Street, and I had a bear in my yard today. And I called the police, and who did I get? Washington County, because there's nobody downtown here at 7:30 in the morning. How about that? $5 million a year police force and nobody on duty. Whoop-de-doo. The bear's still there. Anyway, I'm going back to the very beginning of this thing. I'm older than most people in here. I moved back here in the township to retire and die in the woods. My pacemaker's given out now. I'm 85 in a couple months. And this city is a disaster. I have never seen a city so dysfunctional in my life. When I moved back here, I went to all the city council meetings, Ray Danvers was downtown, he wrapped the damn gavel, Ron and I sat in the front seats that were marked up for us or saved by Chantel. We attended all the meetings. Nobody in this damn town went to any meetings, but they can sure sell complaint after the fact. They took over our damn township, okay? What did we get for it? Nothing. We've been a cash cow to this city since we've been sucked up. And the pity over in this town, they ought to dissolve the school district. The school district couldn't afford boilers and roofs, but they had $3 million in cash to buy that ice arena. That ain't doing nothing for anybody. They want a $7 million swimming pool for synchronized swimming. Most of these girls don't know who Wester Williams is. There's no money in synchronized swimming, and there's no money in hockey unless you're a pro. This city needs some help bad, and as far as, I'm not knocking all the people in here because I have no, and same with giving that Y away, giving the money, all the stuff they've done, with no input from the damn people. Everything was done by the certain, by certain mayors, okay? I'm going to mention my name, but they do as they damn please. Let's get the people involved, and let's get the people in this community, people coming in and talking from different communities. They don't pay taxes here, they got no business sticking their nose in Forest Lake's business. Let's come, let's get this community together, let's get it organized, and work together as a team. That's what we got to do. But everybody has to stick their, keep their damn personal feelings to themselves and do what's right for this community, and don't try to pick on Ben or anybody else. He's trying to do the right thing, and let's all work together. This three to two vote, it's been this way since we were sucked up. I wrote a letter in 2001, of all the things, and what I wrote in that letter was exactly what happened, nothing. So let's all work together here for a change. But this city is divided. There's the old four-mile-square town, and there's 32 square miles of us out in the boonies. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
Eric Langness, 9610223rd Street, North Forest Lake, 55025. I heard a few things tonight, and I want to make sure the record continues to be clear, which is what I have done repeatedly throughout the discussions with Ben and I. The media contacts, not a single one of them were ever made by me. There was quite a few media that even as early as Monday night last week, that had reached out to me while this council was still in session. The other thing I would like to clarify is I have not received an apology from Ben. The email that I have, and I can certainly make it public, I'll make it public on my Facebook page tonight, so that anyone can see the email. It does not contain an apology, and I in fact read media reports that he apologized to the community but specifically excluded me. So for those that think that I've received an apology, it's not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, that will conclude the public session.
And now we'll move on to the regular agenda. And the first item on the regular agenda is fire tech hiring. Dan, you want to take us through that?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to do item six, the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped right over the, I would have cut 15 minutes off the meeting.
Want to make the meeting short, huh?
On the consent agenda, we just need a motion approved.
There's motion.
Anybody like to make that motion?
I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Motion in a second on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Now we can move on. The regular agenda, fire tech hiring. Dan?
Acting mayor members of the council, what we have tonight is the recommendation for the hiring of a fire technician for the city of Forest Lake. If you remember back in March when we kind of, I kind of brought forward the new plan for the front-end staffing, part of that plan was the hiring of additional fire technician. There's two reasons for this. One, we have a lot of permit work that's come in that was anticipated, and it has come through. Our permit volume is up pretty significantly this year. And this position is also designed as a succession planning. We anticipate a retirement within the building division to happen sometime in 19. And this position, by being hired now, would be trained in and able to kind of just take care of that succession plan in the 19. So based on the authorization at the March 12th meeting, and we did post a position, received over 20 applications for the position, we tested them, performed interviews. After going through the process, we made the decision to hire Aaron Reed, or make an offer for Aaron Reed, who currently is a Forest Lake firefighter. Again, that offer was conditional, conditioned upon city council approval. Aaron's been with the Forest Lake Fire Department for 12 years as a firefighter. He's also the president of the Fire Department and treasurer of the Fire Department Relief Association. Prior to working, or prior, in addition to working for the Fire Department, Aaron's also worked for a large national investment firm, where he's held the position of technical investment programmer, and worked in process control for that organization. Just want council to be aware that this is an additional position, so there is potentially a budget impact for 19. Looking at the kind of the budget savings in 18 from the wages, we should be able to accommodate that without any need to increase the 18's budget. However, in 19, we don't know when that retirement's going to happen, so we are going to, you know, there will be an increase in the wages for 19. However, looking back, as we kind of get along in that process, we may be able to shift a few things around in the existing budget to kind of minimize that impact, but I just want council to know that by authorizing this position, that there will be the potential need to increase the wages budget for 19 to account for this position. With that, happy to answer any questions.
When we talked about the hiring of this position when we opened, we talked about budget impact. Is the budget impact the same as what was anticipated then, or has there been anything that's changed?
Budget impact's the same.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned he's already a firefighter. He will, I presume, have double duty? Is that part of the plan?
Yes, it will be a role during the day. If the pager goes off, he'll respond to the fire department. I think that's what you were asking.
I'm asking whether or not he'll be available during the day for calls. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted, so everybody knows exactly what his duties are going to be during that time.
Okay, he'll work in the office, mail handle, issuing permits, take phone calls from the public, could be issuing dog licenses during the day, anything that comes up from day-to-day duties that they currently do. And then if the pager goes off, then he'll respond to the fire department to make runs.
And the long-range goal, he'll be a city inspector?
Well, currently Nate Moats holds a position of fire tech, and he has been trained for inspections. When we have our current inspector that retires, then he will go into that position, and then Aaron Reed then will be the only fire tech. So it's basically filling a position that's being vacated to move up into inspections.
And will that be, Dan, will that impact this year's budget also?
No, there's cost savings because the positions haven't been filled, so those savings will go to apply for the wages that Aaron will make for the rest of the year. So the budget impact in 18 is basically zero. There's still, may even be a savings in there. We haven't done like the actual to-the-penny calculations on there. It's just looking at 19, and we don't know what the actual anticipated retirement date is going to be, and we can't force the retirement based on this. We just have to be prepared to cover those wages for 19 as a result of this hire. And again, we have a demand in work right now. I mean, the permit volume is, like I said, significantly higher than we, you know, anticipated, you know, kind of coming into it, so there is work for him to do. So it's kind of one of those situations where we can get the succession plan in place so we're not kind of faced with, you know, having to bring this forward in 19, we'll all be just ready to go. So that retirement happens in 19, Nate will slide into the building inspector as anticipated, and then Aaron will just become the city's only permit technician, and he'll already be trained for that. So it kind of, in essence, kills two birds with one stone on this hire.
Any other questions?
Things don't quite go as planned, maybe Nate finds his dream job somewhere else. Do we got a contingency plan on this, so we don't have excess staff that doesn't fit the need we have?
I mean, I think if the situation where if the current fire technician finds another job somewhere else, I mean, we'd still have a fire, an existing fire technician to issue the building permits, and we'd have to look at, you know, a potential different building inspector. It's tough to really try to make those predictions at this point, just because there's a lot of variables that can come into play. But kind of given the set of circumstances we have, you know, this kind of set, this kind of tees us up for our decent succession planning within the division, that we'll keep the work going, we'll keep the level of service high, so we don't kind of have to, kind of constantly be kind of put behind the eight ball as we come into the busy season, you know, the busy building seasons.
I'll make a motion that we approve the hire of Aaron Reed as the fire technician position, excuse me, grade five, step three.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Building inspector truck purchase. Chief Newman?
Well, up for consideration is a 2018 Ford F-150 Supercab, XL four-wheel drive. This vehicle is being purchased to replace two trucks that are already in service. Currently, those vehicles are used between inspections, zoning, and building maintenance. The two vehicles that are being replaced is a 2001 GMC Sonoma pickup truck with 115,000 miles on it, and it currently has a stop sign on the floor to keep rocks and stuff coming into the cab. So that's pretty worn out. And then the 2005 Chevrolet Tahoe SUV, which is a retired police vehicle, which is basically falling apart, they call it the Panda. Them are the two that are going to be replaced. And then we have two other vehicles that are in, that stock is a 99 Ford Ranger pickup, but that's a manual transmission. So if you were born after, anytime after 1985, nobody knows how to drive it. And then a 2005 Chevrolet pickup with 110,000 miles, but that's in actually pretty good shape. And so we put that out to bid to three companies. One was Midway Ford. Midway Ford holds a state bid, and the cost of that pickup through them is $25,763, but they have an eight-to-10-week lead-out time. The second, or second lowest bid was Anderson and Cook Ford out of North Branch, are at And then Auto Nation had a bid of $30,117. So our recommendation is to purchase from Anderson Cook Ford, and that's for immediate delivery.
Chief, why a pickup truck? Why not like a transit van or something like that?
Well, we, when we talk to building maintenance, they prefer to, like a cargo van or a transit van. And then building department looked for a pickup for easier access and cleaning the vehicle to put, you know, items in and out of the box. And zoning just said, we'll take any vehicle that doesn't have holes in the floorboard.
What do they normally haul around?
If it's building, they'll haul stuff to the auction, they'll get plywood, basically whatever's requested by city staff that can't fit into a regular vehicle. They'll haul things between other buildings, take things out of storage. So it, it's a vehicle that doesn't get used all the time by building maintenance, but when they need one, a lot of times zoning or inspections will have a vehicle out. So really, the recommendation after talking to everybody was a pickup truck that kind of fit all the different areas of use.
In talking to the mayor, he came up with an idea that maybe if we got some kind of van, you know, a step van or a transit, something like that, that eventually his position could be like a fallout position for the fire department to have his equipment. Say he's out doing inspections, he could have his fire equipment right in that van, and he could report. Is that not a good idea?
You know, it's something that if, that's an area that the mayor's looking at or council's, you know, wants more information, something I really need to go back to building and zoning. and zoning. I don't want to make that call, because that's kind of the vehicle.
I don't want to speak for the mayor either, but I just think it's worth looking into because...
Yep, I know that one of the reasons, because when I originally went out and talked to all the different departments on a vehicle, I looked at a single cab. And building came back and said, you know, we carry other items with us that we'd like that ability to throw things into the backseat. With the maintenance department, sometimes they go with two guys and have things that they need to throw into the backseat. And fire gear could be one of those items that could fit in the backseat of the vehicle as well. But I'd really like to go back and talk to each one of the departments and kind of clarify if a van would work for them for what they're doing. I know that, that building had said that that was a good option.
I would, I would like to, I guess I can't make the motion, but maybe table this until we can have further discussion on it?
Before we do that, can we have one more, one more question perhaps? Clarify timing for me. The, there's a date on the top of this memo that's 2017. Is this an old memo that circled through? Did we talk about it in March of 2017, or was it just this past March? Help my dates.
I stole the letterhead and forgot to change the date.
And this is the same, we did talk about this last March, right? And it was part of the capital improvement plan?
No, this actually, with money that was left over from running a surplus this year, when we went back to the departments and talked to, talked about needs, we actually came up with a pickup truck and a van. And so we were just given the ability to buy one vehicle. The other thing that I will bring up with a van, I don't know what cost, or what's available for different options, but four-wheel drive is something that's important. When you're out in construction sites and other areas, or just Minnesota snow, having that four-wheel drive is a huge deal. So I'm not sure what that's gonna do to cost for a van.
What's the expected retention of this vehicle? How many years?
You know, they don't put a ton of miles on vehicles. If we look at the, you know, average age of these vehicles, they're between 15 and 20 years. And I would expect that we'd probably get that much time out of them. It's a long time.
Do we have any turnover on any of the other vehicles, like your chief vehicle?
No, what happens is when we buy a new chief vehicle, then it just goes down to the next chief. And so typically, we get about 20 years out of each chief vehicle. You know, we don't put the miles on that, that police do on their vehicles. And so me as being the full-time chief, I will put more miles on than the other two chiefs. And so when a new vehicle comes on, I'll pick up that new vehicle, and then chief two will get the next oldest vehicle, and then chief three gets someone's vehicle.
Something falls out the bottom, right?
Yep, and then something falls out of the bottom. Yep.
In the past, we have downside, you know, taken that vehicle that falls off the bottom and put it in the building. I mean, I think that's what you see with the van, the one he called the Panda. I can't remember which one.
Yeah, with, with police vehicles, we've done that.
With police vehicles, those have been brought down, and we try to get the last, kind of the last drop out of those. But we've kind of seen now with the two that are gonna get dropped out, we've last dropped those kind of to the point where, like we said, we have a stop sign holding the floorboard together. And the other vehicle, the transmission is really on its last legs. You, you kind of really have to coax it to get it to go. So we've kind of last dropped them. So I think that's what kind of started the conversation of replacing one of them with something that's gonna basically start that clock back at zero. We don't have to kind of be as dependent upon, you know, another vehicle dropping off. We can kind of just get, for like additional ones, as those other vehicles drop off, we do have some other ones like that manual transmission Ford, which would be next in line, probably could take a replacement vehicle that does drop off.
I just think that, I know where I work, that we have gone from pickup trucks to small vans, then to transit vans, and now the latest, we just received one last week. It's a transit, extended transit, and you could be six foot three and stand up in that thing. And, I mean, you could have full gear for a firefighter hanging in the back, and it just lends itself to be able to do so much more.
Yeah, I think in, for zoning and inspections, I don't see them really getting a use out of the van. For the building department, that's what they specifically requested was some sort of cargo van.
I think we should have further discussion.
I think it's worth, if we're gonna make the purchase, make sure it's the right purchase. And perhaps also worth getting bids on the van with the four-wheel drive requirements, just to see what the cost difference is.
I can bring that back at the next council meeting.
Great.
So you want to table it then? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I'd like to table it if, if that's okay.
Well, I'd make a motion, maybe table it as per Chief Newman's request, and we'll go from there.
Sam's made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mar, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And let's see, the last thing, Winnick Supply invoices.
I'd make a motion that we pay the Winnick Supply invoices.
I'll second. I'll second.
Now we got a motion in a second to pay the Winnick Supply invoices. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain for Ben, and I'll say aye. Then if you'll, can you read that for... Oh yeah, that's right. Okay, we'll move on to council updates. I may as well start with Al down in the end.
I've got a short update today. Fire runs year-to-date, we're at 192. Last year at this time, we were at 161, so we're at a 19, almost 20% increase over the previous year. And last year, we did about a 20% increase over the previous year. And in 2016, we're about 12% increase over the previous year. So year over year, we've seen some major increases for the last three years. We have a fire, joint fire board meeting here on Thursday. And at that meeting, we'll talk about fire runs for last year and the first half of, or the first five months of this year, to kind of show the trends. This weekend was pretty busy. We had 12 calls over the weekend, starting with a structured fire in the township on Friday. We had two car fires, two grass fires, three storm-related calls, a few medicals, and a water-related accident. So several of the calls were over three hours in length, so it was pretty busy for the Fire Department. That's all I've got for updates, unless you have something for me.
Al, is there a distinction between Columbus and us as far as the number of calls? Are both communities up?
As far as in my breakdown for the meeting, yeah.
General, the calls going up, are there more in Forest Lake?
It's kind of all across the board. It's just, it's not one kind of call type that is resulting in our increase. And, you know, we've kind of used 25% of the calls in Columbus as a benchmark, and last year, it was right around 25%. So it hasn't, between the two jurisdictions, we're not seeing a major increase in either one. It's kind of equal across the board.
Thank you. Bailey?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Dan?
Arts in the Parks starts next Tuesday, and we'll go through the entire summer, so we have the first Arts in the Park scheduled to go. The EDA is continuing to work on their work plan. Last meeting we had, we kind of got to the next level of detail on the work, on the work plan, so I'm working with Chris to kind of get those details fleshed out, and we'll bring that back for the EDA to kind of give their last little blessing on, and then that document will come before council as well. So council has an opportunity to provide some input on that document as well. Ryan asked me to give a brief update, since he's not here tonight. He mentioned that Highway 8 received approximately $3 million in funding at the last legislative session for kind of a pre-planned, from basically Forest Lake over to Carmel and Shisago. However, with kind of the, the last little, the governor vetoing some of the budget bills and coming back, he's not quite sure if that's still in there. Now, he heard it is, he heard it didn't get funded, so he's looking into that. But there was, at the end of the last legislative session, there was some money that was available for some pre-planned work to be done along Highway 8. Don't really know what that, the scope of that's gonna look like yet, but at least they're starting to kind of have some conversations about some redesign work on Highway 8. And the final thing I have is the recruitment documents were released to me yesterday from Jim Miller, and I have copies for everybody to review here at the dais. If you have any comments on that, any changes you want to see made, please let me know, and I'll get those over to Jim Miller. But he said pending any changes, he's ready to get those released this week and get the position posted and kind of to the next step with the recruitment, so.
Where will he be posting?
I can ask him for a full list. I know he's kind of gonna give this kind of the full approach from local job boards to kind of the national search, his own rolodex. He's gonna kind of give it, you know, kind of look under every rock, so to speak, for the next administrator.
Thank you. Bridgette?
Thank you. No update.
Sam?
Since the last regular meeting, I attended the school board meeting, and that was the one where they decided to close the Central Monastery School, save another $300,000. And that was the big issue that night. And after that, last Thursday, I attended the watershed district meeting, and Highway 8 was a big conversation there because of the work that's gonna be happening there on, by Comfort Lake and all along that stretch. And then on Monday, yesterday, I attended the Memorial Day service here at Lakeside Park. Well-attended. Weather was gorgeous. It was in the morning, and the breeze was blowing off the lake there, and it was really good program. And then made it to at least one cemetery where I have a friend buried there that died in Vietnam, so it was a big day yesterday, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right.
I missed a YMCA meeting since our last, our last meeting. However, a quick note that the splash pad is now open, and a reminder that there are open hours available for both the splash pad and the gym to all Forest Lake residents. Also attended the Memorial Day service yesterday. It's great to see a packed park on a beautiful day. Echo all of Sam's comments. And that's it for me tonight.
Please.
Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission did not meet this time around. Didn't have enough members for a quorum, but we have a new appointee, Tim Gary, and we're hoping to get another appointee here soon, so we can have a full commission move forward. Other than that, no further updates.
Thank you. As for myself, I did not attend the memorial service. I do things a little different. For me, that's a special day. That's my day, and I kind of observe it my way. So I wasn't there. Apologize if anybody missed me, but I doubt that they did. Anyways, I'd just like to say thank you to all those that did serve, and it is a special day, not only for those, but their families, so. That's all I've got. Want to move to closed session?
I move to close.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Well, he's gonna make a motion, I think.
I move to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section 13D05 subdivision 3B pursuant to the attorney-client privilege to discuss the runway design dispute with Short, Elliott Hendrickson. The closed meeting will be held at the Forest Lake Room, and will commence immediately. Once the closed meeting is completed, the city council will reconvene the open meeting portion of tonight's city council meeting in council chambers, there being no further items on the agenda. Once back in open session, the council will simply adjourn the meeting.
So I don't imagine anybody wants to stay around just to adjourn, but I want to thank you all for coming.
Yeah, well, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor of adjourning for a closed meeting, say aye.